We will call the July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Orman Beach City Commission Meeting to order. It is exactly seven P. M. and I hope you felt welcomed this evening by Alex Schuman and our I.T. manager Chuck Osteen. I want to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left is our recording secretary Taylor Locker. If you want to speak this evening on any item or an item not on the agenda, you need to get a card, fill it out real quick, and give that to her. Also, our city clerk Susan Daughters. And then we have our city commissioner from Zone One Lori Tolland.
Welcome, everyone.
City Commissioner from Zone Two Travis Sargent.
Good evening.
To my left and your right, Commissioner Susan Persis from Zone Three.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Our deputy mayor and Zone Four Commissioner Harold Brylet.
Good evening, everyone.
City Manager Joyce Shanahan, Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley, City Attorney Randy Hayes, and way over there to my left and way over to your right are Police Chief Jesse Godfrey and Fire Chief Howard Bailey. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and we'll have the invocation given by Pastor Neil Ganzell from Coquina Presbyterian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pray with me, Father. We thank you for the right and privilege of governance such as we enjoy in this city. We thank you for each member of the elected commissioners. We ask you to give them wisdom tonight as they deliberate what they have before them. We thank you, Father, for the police and the fire, for all the first responders in this city that every day take their life in their hands sometimes to keep us safe, and we pray that you would guard them and give them great wisdom. We thank you, Father, for the staff of this city and how they put together these meetings very detailed. I've been watching this for about ten, fifteen years now, and it's a remarkably well-managed city. Father, we thank you for your mercies to us. We remember in that respect, Lord, former board member Rick Bohm and his wife Dee. In the tragic loss of their daughter Krista, we pray that you would comfort them, that you would bring that family together around the grief and the love that they have for their child. We thank you that in all ways, oh, God, you are close to those who grieve. And finally, Father, we do pray that this city would continue to be the place where there is beauty, Father, where there is justice, where there is a commitment to do all things well in all elements of this city's great governance. I pray these things in the name of my Lord Jesus Christ, asking him to bless us today, tonight, with a meeting that is filled with wisdom and peace. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move to Agenda Item Four, Adoption of the Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four Tentative Millage Rate, and I'll ask the clerk to read Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-three dash one-ten.
Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-three dash one-ten, a resolution adopting proposed millage rates for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year, establishing the date, time, and place for the first public hearing on the proposed millage rates and the tentative budget, directing communication, expressing legislative intent, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number Two Thousand Twenty-three dash one-ten, read by title only.
Thank you. Per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the tentative millage rate for the City of Orman Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget is three point nine two six zero mils. This rate is thirteen point seven one percent above the rollback rate of three point four five two five mils. The tentative debt service millage rate is point zero eight zero for the two thousand and ten General Obligation Bond sinking fund. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the tentative millage rate? Madam Clerk, have we received any comment cards? Are there any persons who have registered to speak?
No, we have not.
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask for a motion and second to adopt the tentative millage rates.
I move approval of the millage rate for two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty-four, the tentative millage rate.
Second.
Second.
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay.
You just said three point nine blah blah.
Two six oh.
I'm confused. I thought that the A and B was four point oh oh six.
Kelly will explain for you.
Correct. The total is four point zero zero six, but point zero eight of that is the debt service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions, comments, commission? If not, please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brylet?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
No. And so the tentative operating millage rate is set at three point nine two six zero mils by a vote of four to one, which is thirteen point seven one percent above the rollback millage rate of three point four five two five mils. And with that, we'll move to presentations and proclamations. And I'll ask Judge Schuman and anyone she wants to bring with her to come on up. So Judge, we have your husband, Bill, and also your son Alex.
Yes.
Many of you may or may not know Alex is a Orman Beach City employee, working in our engineering department, and we love him almost as much as we love Judge Schuman, retired Judge Schuman. So it's an honor tonight to have you here, Your Honor, and to be able to present this proclamation to you. I'm going to read it because there's a lot of good information in here. Judges come in a variety of shapes, sizes, interests, passions, and levels of community involvement from just A to Z. You can name them, but Judge Schuman has been so passionately involved in this community and done so much for this community that you would otherwise not know about. I thought it was important that we honor her and recognize her tonight, and she really has made Volusia County a much better place to live. So whereas native Floridian, born at McDill Air Force Base and thirty-five-year resident of Volusia County, Judge Bell Schuman graduated with honors from Stetson University, earned her undergraduate degree before pursuing her Juris Doctor from Florida State University. Upon graduating, Judge Schuman was admitted to the Florida Bar in nineteen eighty-four and appointed as Volusia County Court Judge in two thousand and five by Governor Jeb Bush. Since then, she has led an exemplary and distinguished legal career. And whereas County Court Judge Schuman presided over county court cases, including misdemeanors, traffic, civil, and small claims, she's credited with spearheading the creation of the Volusia County DUI Treatment Court to provide supervised treatment for repeat offenders and establishing the sentencing alternatives for Volusia enforcement, SAVE Docket, to divert homeless and indigent nonviolent offenders into social services, treatment, and community service instead of incarceration and court costs. And whereas innovative practices like these have inspired a groundswell of appreciation for Judge Schuman, both in her courtroom and in Volusia County, community organizations have honored her for a great variety of humanitarian endeavors over the years, earning her the Chief of Justice Award for Judicial Excellence in two thousand and eighteen. She is most extolled for having led a countywide effort to create a transitional homeless shelter in two thousand and nineteen, we know it as the First Step Shelter. And whereas with her love for education, Judge Schuman is credited for teaching fellow judges about various topics, including jury trials, legal writing, and evidence. And as the Chair of the Seventh Circuit Professionalism Committee, she established a biennial professionalism seminar to regularly bring lawyers and judges together for discussions on ethics and professionalism. She's been active attorneys and members of the public about the different court divisions and teaching classes to help police officers satisfy continuing training requirements. And whereas the City of Orman Beach is immensely grateful to Judge Schuman for her incredible leadership and commitment to the families of our region, we thank her for her extraordinary public service to Volusia County and wish her all the best as she begins to enjoy the fruits of her well-earned retirement, spending time with her husband Bill, two sons Alex and Ben, and new granddaughter Harper. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, on behalf of the entire commission, do hereby proclaim July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as a day to recognize Judge Bell Schuman in the City of Orman Beach and encourage all city staff and residents to join me in expressing congratulations and gratitude for her service and dedication to the community. Congratulations. I always like to say, before we get pictures, Judge, in recognition of everything that I just said, and to thank you even further, I want to present you with a key to the City of Orman Beach. We have the large version and then a smaller version you can wear on your lap. We're all set. We have some great presentations tonight, and Officer Stokes is one of those officers who does an incredible job, has a powerful impact in our community, and it's such an honor to honor you tonight. I know you were already honored at the school, but we wanted to, and Commissioner Tolland wanted to make sure especially, that we recognized you in front of the commission. And so whereas Officer Gregory Stokes' thirty-year career with the City of Orman Beach started in December nineteen ninety-three with the Leisure Services Department, his passion for the community led him to transfer to the Police Department as a Community Service Officer in March nineteen ninety-eight. In February two thousand, he began his career in law enforcement, where he worked diligently for eight and a half years in patrol. And whereas as a certified DARE instructor, Officer Stokes taught youth about the dangers of drugs and the power of making positive choices. This motivated him to be the first Orman Beach School Resource Officer at Orman Beach Middle School in two thousand and seventeen. As an SRO, he discouraged criminal activities, bless you, addressed safety concerns, and fostered a positive image of law enforcement among the students. And whereas throughout his career, Officer Stokes' pursuit of knowledge further contributed to his expertise. He earned two associate degrees at Daytona Beach Community College, a Bachelor's of Science in Criminal Justice from the University of Central Florida, and Crime Prevention Practitioner Certification through the Attorney General's Office. And whereas Officer Stokes received numerous official commendations through his career, including Employee of the Quarter, Above and Beyond Award, Meritorious Police Service Award, Volusia League of Cities Distinguished Service Award for Public Safety, Top Pal Volunteer of the Year, and Life Changer of the Year, as well as numerous letters of appreciation from members of the community. And whereas beyond his official duties, Officer Stokes was active with national night out in the Orman Beach Citizens Police Academy. If I pass out, you're going to help me out, right? Losing my breath here. He has been a devoted member of the Orman Beach Police Athletic League, mentoring, coaching, and transporting youth to events. It is evident that Officer Stokes genuinely cares for the youth of Orman Beach and is committed to their success. His outstanding dedication and willingness to go above and beyond earn him the respect and admiration from colleagues and residents. And whereas today we honor Officer Stokes and congratulate him on his well-deserved retirement, we wish him the best in his future endeavors, which will include spending time with his wife Phyllis and two daughters, Manisha and Nadia. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire commission here in Orman Beach, do hereby proclaim July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as a day to recognize and celebrate Officer Gregory Stokes in the City of Orman Beach and encourage all city staff and residents to join in congratulating and expressing gratitude for his service and dedication to the community. Mr. Daniels stood up, and I'm going to do the but wait, there's more for you as well. So, and Mr. Daniels, you want a picture?
Yeah, I wanted you to have this.
All right, come on up, Mr. Daniels. All right, I'm going to let you say a few words about that. Let me present you with the key to the city and a smaller version to...
First of all, I want to thank everyone for being here, and I want to especially thank the commission for recognizing this. Let me see, I'm trying to gather my words here, so just bear with me. I don't know if I used to speak it. I talk a lot, but... Serena. So, so first of all, when I do these things, I do them because I guess that's part of who I am, you know, the kids, the community. And it was Mr. Daniels and his late wife, Mrs. Daniels. They was the pioneers in the neighborhood. They're the ones that led examples, and those were the people that you looked up to and you wanted to be like. They taught you about community service, you know, and being a good neighbor, encouraged you to go to church and those sorts of things. So I thought it was important for him to come up here with me, you know, because, no, I come from a single parent. My parents divorced twice, so the people in the neighborhood raised me, and Mr. Dee was one of those people, you know. So all the things that the mayor just read off is a tribute to Mr. and Mrs. Daniels, as well as my parents. I will still be helping pal and leisure services, anyone else who may need my help. You know where to find me.
All right, it's Parks and Rec Month. We have our Leisure Services Director, Robert Carolyn, with us to present a proclamation to him and his staff. Whereas parks and rec programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Orman Beach. And whereas parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining quality of life in communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active lifestyles that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those mentally or physically disabled, improving the emotional health of all citizens. And whereas natural recreation areas improve and protect water and air quality, provide vegetative buffers, and ensures the ecological beauty of the community. And whereas the residents of Orman Beach, including children, youth, families, adults, seniors, businesses, community organizations, and visitors, benefit from the parks, open space, sports fields and courts, facilities, programs, classes, concerts, and special events provided by the Leisure Services Department. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the city values the essential services that park and recreation professionals, staff, and volunteers perform to provide enrichment for citizens of all ages. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, do hereby proclaim July two thousand and twenty-three as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Orman Beach and urge all residents to join in recognizing the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Congratulations. At this time, we'll hear from those of you who have signed a card to speak about any item which is not on the printed agenda for this meeting. You have three minutes, and we'll start with Suzanne Shiber and Judy Dragon will be on deck.
I'm Suzanne Shiber, five four eight Sandy Oaks Boulevard, Orman Beach. My organization is Dream Green Volusia, a not-for-profit countywide environmental group. The Wildlife Corridor in Volusia County was established beginning in two thousand and one. Our Volusia Forever Land Conservation Program has been in existence for twenty-two years now. To date, approximately fifty-five percent of the corridor has been preserved in our county. Volusia Forever is a matching funds program. Land within the Wildlife Corridor in Volusia qualifies for matching funds through Florida Forever as long as the guidelines are met. Currently, any land located immediately outside of the corridor can be submitted as a special exception to Florida Forever, and it takes two years for review seeking qualification for funding, but there are no guarantees. The Volusia Forever Committee voted eight to zero on June sixteenth in favor of county staff doing the research and ground truthing for the pursuit of expanding the Wildlife Corridor in our county. The consideration of expanding the Wildlife Corridor in Volusia County requires research by ground truthing and submitting to Florida Ecological Greenways Network for determination. There are only certain areas of the county remaining that may be considered for qualifying. The FEGN prioritizes land one, two, and three, which qualify for Florida Forever funding. The existing Wildlife Corridor in Volusia County contains priority one and two lands, though currently no priority three. We are requesting support for the research to be done as Volusia County has been the leaders of the pack with land conservation because of the longevity of our conservation program. It is time to investigate environmentally sensitive areas outside of the current corridor that may qualify for inclusion. There are no guarantees. Volusia Forever is a willing sellers program, and we owe it to ourselves to buy for matching funds and protect our most environmentally sensitive areas that remain. We're requesting the letter of support from the City of Orman Beach Commission for the pursuit of research and ground truthing efforts to be made by county staff for expanding the Volusia Wildlife Corridor through the FEGN. This decision will go before the Volusia County Council. With seventy-five percent of the residents in our county voting to renew the land conservation program, your consideration of this matter is important to achieving environmentally sensitive preservation goals. State legislators approved a large amount of funding for conservation, and the information was sent via email to you. I'm not asking for the city for money. I'm not asking the city to do the work. I'm simply asking for a letter of support. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Judy Dragon, and on deck is Elaine Davis.
Thank you for having me. Judy Dragon, I live at thirty-three Wilmett Avenue, and I'm here regarding a meeting that a number of neighbors that are with me this evening came to on February the twenty-seventh regarding thirty-seven Wilmett Avenue, which is next door to me. And during that meeting, I spoke, not knowing that the notes from the meeting would be given to the neighbor next door, and she promptly came over and threatened me after I attended the meeting. Because of that threat, I have to listen to a radio twenty-four seven now, probably for the rest of my life. That's about ten feet from my residence. I have a list of over one hundred times that the police have been called to this residence. We were told in the meeting of two dates on February twenty-seventh that would take place. Those dates were March twenty-seventh, that her property was to be cleared and ready for an inspection on April tenth by the city. This is regarding scrapping metal, having transient people on her property constantly, homeless people staying at the residence. I don't know anything outside of that firsthand. Those dates have both long passed. Nothing has been done. The junk is still coming in. Recent camper was brought onto the driveway, which I reported immediately to Chris Mason, who has worked with us on this issue. Donna threatened me at my home after finding out I had spoken about her on April fifth. On that day, she told me that I would be sorry that I had ever bought my house, and she has proceeded to make that happen. I filed a complaint with the Police Department regarding her coming on my property and threatening me. There is another house that Donna is associated with and works out of at the corner of South Ridgewood and Seville. This residence is a sham. It has almost a half block of stored metal on it, and I don't understand how this has been allowed to stay this length of time. Metal scrapping is a big business in our neighborhood, and someone needs to start to work on this immediately. I'm making improvements to my home, and I plan to stay as long as I can. With insurance costs skyrocketing, I could be forced to sell my house at any time. Donna's home is destroying values and opportunity to sell for those of us near her. The real blame here lies with the cities dragging their feet, letting dates lapse and turning a blind eye to what has become a nightmare for many of its residents. A survey was done on my street by Michelle, the Chief of Police, a few months ago, where neighbors were surveyed about what was happening in our neighborhood. I'd like to know if we could be privy to what was found out in that survey, and... Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Davis, followed by Douglas Young.
Hello, my name's Elaine Davis. I live at seventy-six Melrose Avenue. I'm actually one of Judy's neighbors on the backside. My issues here today are based on code enforcement. Our neighborhood is starting to look bad, and I have talked to code enforcement several times. It got to the point where nothing was getting done. We've got vehicles parked, we've got trailers, we've got trash, we've got garbage, and it's a beautiful area. I just built a brand-new home, and I just moved into it in January, but I've lived on Melrose for twenty years. We got together as neighbors, fourteen of us. We had a meeting at my home. We invited Travis. He came. We vented to him what our issues were. He suggested that we send emails to you folks and whomever else, so I sent an email to code enforcement. I am now being threatened by somebody who was on the list to be checked out. That doesn't scare me the least bit, though, but my concern is that nothing has happened. The same issues that I put in... So I'm just asking you guys to figure out a way to let the city employees do the job. I mean, they're already out there, they're seeing what's wrong. And I mean, I live right here in Ormond Terrace, and I could tell you that on every block, from Granada to Sanchez, from Beach Street to US-1, there's violations. There's just, some houses have three and four trucks and trailers just on their front lawns. We've got to clean it up. I've been here 20 years. When I moved here, it was absolutely beautiful. Code enforcement was right out there. If I left a trailer in my driveway overnight, boom, I had a notification the next morning to get it out of here. So just asking you guys to figure out a way to bring it back, and I'll volunteer my time. Whatever we need to do as a community to bring it together and clean it up. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Douglas Young, followed by Cynthia Valdez.
Douglas Young, I live at 34 Melrose Avenue. My issues on speed bumps. The city has put a couple on Melrose, but from Ridgewood Avenue to Beach Street is like a racetrack. I mean, it's really pretty bad, and I'm sure the city hears it on every street. We've been asking the city for speed bumps on our block for almost two years, one in front of my house at 34 and one in front of 76. We have spoke to the city minimum of 50 times. We have also submitted a 28 signature petition just from our block. We received nothing. As everybody knows, the traffic has increased tremendously over the years, and Melrose has become a cut-through street, from US-1 to Beach Street and from Beach Street going to US-1. The speed of some of the cars is very dangerous. Neighbors while walking their dogs have almost been struck, and backing out of the driveway is insane. Please get us what we asked for, for the safety of our neighborhood. Other than Beach Street and Ridgewood Avenue, Melrose is the second busiest street in Ormond Terrace. Second only to Wilmun, which is an artery, and we're not an artery. I would ask that the commission request the three traffic control reports that the city has taken to confirm what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia Valdez, or Valdez, and on deck, thank you, will be Jeff Burr.
That was the oil spill. So I was born in Ray, so I was born at the Halt Pack, so I was born here. I moved away. I was born to go to Florida State to go to college. I'm sure you guys heard of Ted Bundy. I didn't go there, so I wanted to go into Texas. I was gone for 38 years. My children are gone to New York, decided to move from Colorado back home. This is where I was born. I got tired of the snow. I settled in Ormond, graduated from Mayhem, started the DVCC, bought a house at 43 Wilmun. I am the neighborhood Judy. I am on the west side. Donna lives in the middle, Judy lives on the right side, on the east side. What is ironic is I am an HOA manager. I manage 2,500 homes in six different communities. Maybe there should be some ordinances to give you more power, authority, for, to utilize our police force, to make 100 calls, or code enforcement to feel impotent to keep doing things over and over. A judge ordered this cleanup. So my story is, I have to put my house up for sale for personal reasons. Had it on the market for a week, got a call. Realtor wanted to show it Sunday morning at 10:00. Oh, y'all know Realtors don't really work on Sunday around here, but they flew one from downtown. They wanted to look at my house. I said, "My husband left, let's go to breakfast and get groceries." We did. An hour and a half later, Eddie, my old girlfriend, got a call from my Realtor. "They're just leaving your house." And they have interest. Well, hell, I hope so. They've been there an hour and a half. I hope they love my house. Well, but they have concerns. Guess what their concerns were? The hoarding going on next door. Surely, the city of Ormond Beach has more authority to take care of this and help this woman clean up her property. It's really affecting my value. I could have had my house sold. Now I'm worried if I'm even going to get my house sold, because if this house wasn't like this when I moved in, or I moved in the other day, neither would any of you. This is your neighbors too. You live here. Travis, you live here. All of us live here. And for us to let this continue without helping the situation, it's absurd. So I just want to sell my house and make money on the most valuable asset that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Burr, followed by Missy Herrera.
I'm here to speak on Letter A116, so I should have crossed it somewhere.
Not a problem. That would be consent agenda, thanks. All right, we'll see if that gets pulled or not. So, Missy Herrera.
Hi, my name's Missy Herrera. I live at 111 North St. Andrews. I'm here to talk about the Wildlife Corridor, and as Suzanne explained to you, and she knows much more in depth in the research of it, of the history of it. But I wanted to kind of talk about the Wildlife Corridor in relation to the Loop. So the Loop wasn't ever included in the Wildlife Corridor because of the DRI that was on the west side of the state park. A couple of years after the Wildlife Corridor was established, you know, the campaign for Save the Loop started, right? Because I think most of the residents thought that it was saved. So as development started and more and more happened, people were like, "Hey, we've got to save this natural treasure that we have as part of our community." Many years later, 2019, Defend the Loop came, right? Because we actually didn't save the Loop as much as we thought we did. As development increased in density and proximity to the historic byway. So now we have Regrow the Loop, right? Because now we're trying to regrow what we didn't save and what we didn't defend. Please get behind the letter of support to the County Council requesting a vote in favor of committing county staff to prioritizing researching available land adjacent to the Wildlife Corridor. Because we won't have a second chance to regrow this. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And approval of minutes, the minutes have been sent to the commission for review. Also posted to the city's website, any additions, deletions, or corrections? These are the June 6, 2023 regular city commission meetings. Mr. Mayor, will you approve? Second. If you've seconded all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, like, sign, and we'll show those passed unanimously. We now move to the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. If you've seconded, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Does any commissioner wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? If not, we'll move to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read 9A.
Ordinance number 2023-33, an ordinance annexing a portion of Harmony Avenue right-of-way into the city of Ormond Beach. Said property located at the intersection of Hall Road and Harmony Avenue, bisecting 1399 Hull Trail, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the right-of-way, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Ormond Beach to include the right-of-way, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Ormond Beach to include the right-of-way, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-33, read by title only.
Thank you. It is a second reading. Does anyone have questions for Planning Director Spraker? Anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of ordinance number 2023-33.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Breyley?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9B.
Ordinance number 2023-35, an ordinance amending Paragraph C, official zoning map of Section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone a portion of a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 0.34 acres located at 145 North Young Street, Volusia County Parcel Number 4215-04-01-0270. From B-4 Central Business to Planned Business Development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-35, read by title only.
Thank you. Susan, and I'll ask our Planning Director, Stevens Spraker, to speak on, I think, are you going to take B, C, and D?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Stevens Spraker, Plan Director. Our presentation will cover the next three items, since they're all interrelated. The applications revolve around 145 North Young Street. It's bounded by Dix Avenue to the north, US Highway 1 here to the west, and then Highland Avenue here. There are three actions that are being sought. Two are zoning map amendments, and one is the issuance of a development order. This property has had a permitting history since 2005. Originally, it was approved for 82,000 square feet of commercial and 10 residential units. 2009, that was amended down to 21,016 residential units. Of that, 9,000 square feet of retail was built, and the current application proposes 64 residential units. In 2019, there was a comprehensive plan amendment that basically set the boundaries of how this property was intended to be developed. So the land uses on this property are unique. There is general commercial, which is abutting US-1. There's medium-density residential interior to the site, and they also picked up a parcel, which is low-density residential. Those land uses could allow theoretically a maximum of 107 units. The zoning has different designations. The front is planned business development, the back is planned residential development, and then they've added parcels which need to go into both the planned business development and planned residential development. So there's a lot going on from a zoning perspective. So the first item seeks to take this parcel here, which they bought, and put it into the planned business development. The zoning map amendment establishes the framework for the last item, which is the issuance of the development order. The next zoning map amendment seeks to take the two residential areas which they purchased and put it into the planned residential development. That is .72 acres. So the last part of this is the planned residential development. This site plan shows basically the perimeter wrapped with landscaping, stormwater ponds, and then the buildings, eight of them, are located throughout the property. The gross density for the project is approximately 10 units per acre, and that's for both the commercial and the residential portion. The existing Dollar General store would stay, that's about 9,000 square feet. The total parking requirements for the project are 131 spaces. They're at 164. The building height for the proposed residential units are two stories at 25 feet in height, total of eight buildings with a minimum setback of 50 feet. This line shows the demarcation of planned business development, planned residential development. The planned business development does allow both commercial and residential uses. One of the things that, through the site plan process and through neighborhood meetings, there originally was commercial on this front portion. One of the comments heard from residents was, "It's too intense, too much traffic." So one of the results was to reduce the trips by adding just residential uses, and then to restrict the entry into the project from Highland only. So these trips couldn't go back out Highland and cause additional traffic along Highland Avenue. So that's one of the items that came through the site plan process. At the planning board meeting, there are five conditions that the planning board recommended. The applicant can send it to all five, and there's one more condition that came after the planning board meeting. The conditions were movement of the dumpster into the interior of the site, additional security around the stormwater pond, basically establishing a wall around the perimeter of site. My graphic missed, there's a wall proposed here along Dix, between Dix and the project there, too. And then to ensure that this entry point is designed, so you can only have entry in, you couldn't have people try to sneak out. So it's designed to the best of the engineer's possibility of not allowing people to exit this, and then provide downlighting, which is a land development code requirement anyway. Since the planning board, there was an email from a property owner along Dix Avenue asking for a bamboo hedge along the rear of the property. The applicant has consented to that. If the city commission agrees to these changes, we'll update the exhibits that incorporates this all into the second reading. Throughout the process, we've received correspondence, concerned about traffic and overdevelopment, the impact to both Dix and Highland, the lack of green space, the dumpster location, which I believe has been fixed. So those informations are in your packet. The planning board recommended approval of both zoning map amendments with a 6 to 0 vote. They recommended approval of the development order with a 5 to 1 vote, and the applicant is here to address the commissioner with any questions.
Thank you, Steven. Any questions for Steven? Thank you.
And the applicant, represented by Joey Posey, attorney from Storch Law Firm.
Okay. Perfect. There we go. Good evening, Joey Posey, 420 South Nova, attorney for the applicant and owner. And Steven hit a lot of the salient points to this, and I'm probably going to try to get through this quickly and highlight a couple of areas that I think are important to the neighbors and also important to be responsive to what we're hearing. Again, the idea is to be a community, as part of the community here. We don't want to do something that's adverse to everybody, and I really do think that this is something special, that, something that I think is needed, and something that, once we walk through it, that, as you can see, as we've walked through this, that the viability and also with, again, with the neighborhood, that we're trying to do something right here. So, like I think Steven has pointed out, again, this is really infill development, and that's something that you don't see very often, and when you're talking about trying to do the right thing and cut down on sprawl, cut down on, you know, moving out into these more sensitive areas of the city, that you want to take advantage of the areas that you already have and try to encourage growth there. So, you know, that's something to point out, and, again, it's, could be potentially the first downtown multifamily in over 40 years. I saw in the staff report, there was an extensive discussion about that, and, again, trying to encourage, you know, again, that density in the more, you know, more active areas of the community, trying to make it walkable, trying to discourage folks from using those cars to get from place to place, and, you know, being in proximity to the Dollar General, being in proximity to downtown, that, that's something that, you know, this project could accomplish all of those goals. Steven touched on all of this. Again, you got, it is a split complaint designation with a potential density of 107 units. It has commercial, it's bounded on all sides, and, again, you know, when you're talking in terms of good planning, you want those transitions. You want something that eases into where you have residential neighborhoods that are to the east, and at the same time, you don't want something so intense or so dense along the, along your corridors that can be disruptive to them. And our site plan really reflects that with a lot of our buffering and a lot of our tree preservation, et cetera. And you can tell, you know, many folks have made an attempt at this, but we only seem to have accomplished the Dollar Tree part of this, so we're excited about trying to see this thing to fruition. The, as Steven pointed out, this is a expansion of the existing PD. It's adding more acreage that, you know, gives us an opportunity to add more open space, more green spaces. I know one of the residents may have pointed out that he didn't see much green space, but one of my slides a little later, you're talking about a third of the property that is actually open space, and a lot of the tree areas we're trying to preserve, especially around that walled area, too, and something that we were talking about is potentially not trying to use footers for that wall to keep those trees from being impacted. So, you know, we're trying to be kind- And, and the, this, our site plan really reflects that with a lot of our buffering and a lot of our tree preservation, et cetera. And, and you can tell, you know, many folks have made an attempt at this, but we only seem to have accomplished the Dollar Tree part of this. So, we're, we're, we're excited about trying to see this thing to fruition. The, as Stephen pointed out, this is a expansion of the existing PD. It's adding more acreage. That, you know, gives us an opportunity to add more open space, more green spaces. I, I know one of the residents may, have, may have pointed out that he didn't see much green space, but I, one of my slides a little later, you're talking about a third of the property that is, is actually open space, and a lot of the tree areas we're trying to preserve, especially around that walled area, too. And something that we were talking about is potentially not trying to use footers for that wall to keep those, that, those trees from being impacted. So, you know, this, we're trying to be conscious of that and to make sure that we're not impacting that buffer for the neighbors, which is very expansive. That's fifty feet from the, from the nearest building. Dressing traffic, we've limited the left turn, as you can see, removed the high-traffic commercial area. Again, trying to encourage that walkability. We, you know, we're, you know, the less cars, the best cars, and, you know, you're actually taking about a third of the trips off of the table by getting rid of that commercial. So, you know, I know there's probably not a perfect world for everybody, but, you know, trying to be responsive to neighbors, I think that's the right thing to do. And as you can see there, too, that the, the internal, the internal access that folks are trying to exit and even enter, you could easily do it through the Dollar Tree and without impacting the side residential roads. So, I think that's a win-win for everybody. Just easily pointing out that the original PD was for five stories, and this is the present view shed. It's not that appealing and, you know, could use some work. The, it's next to the Dollar, the Dollar General, and trying to incorporate that, that into the site plan was part of the, the vision for what we were thinking here. And also trying to address some of the site conditions, 'cause, you know, you have invasive species of, out there. You have what appears, I'm sure, to be homeless that, you know, have made it, you know, a place to gather, and, you know, really trying to get after that and make it better for the community is really, is part of, is part of this project, too. And that's precisely what the proposed, proposed view attempts to do. You know, we want that view shed along the corridor there with the heavy vegetation and the landscape buffer. The tree preservation is trying to encourage walkability with the dog parks in proximity to the Dollar General. You have the downtown, that's just a few blocks away. There's, there's, you know, a lot of encouragement just based on the planning side of this that, you know, keeps people from wanting to get into that car and having to use that car to, you know, use it as their mode of transportation because everybody, everything's so close. This is a picture of the elevation internally of what the buildings will look like, and, you know, it's a very nice elevation with some of the more mature trees. This isn't necessarily the frontage look, but, you know, something when you're in the community, what you're going to see when you're walking and when you're using the dog park. Again, here's another rear view of one. And, you know, trying to keep that parking internal, trying to keep all of, everything internal away from the neighbors, you know, big buffers, encouraging those that, that major view shed for folks. And, you know, I thought this was a very nice exhibit that, again, in the hypothetical example of trying to see if somebody could see into the backyards, it's not even possible. That it's such a distance and at the highest possible point that you can't see over into any neighbor. So, that's, that was something that was important. The, again, I mentioned the thirty-three plus of open, open space on the site. It has about thirty-five hundred square feet of natural vegetation, and that's being preserved. You know, and that's part of, you know, gathering these little pieces of property and incorporating it into the overall development, that that was important, that if we can maximize that open space in that preservation area. There's no wetlands, so there's no wetland impact. And interestingly enough, that actually, you know, after you develop this, it, it helps with the stormwater. That you get a seventy-two percent reduction in the post hundred year with, with the development, just with the grading and the, and the stormwater ponds. So, that was a huge plus for any neighbors that may be impacted by some, some of the, the recent hurricanes and, you know, those kind of things. 'Cause I know that's, that's in everybody's mind, and that's, that's what there's, everyone's sensitive to, and I can understand that. And as Stephen pointed out, the stipulations, yes, everything that was mentioned by him, we have no problem incorporating. We've already added the wall. We've added the dumpster. The bamboo is fine. There was a mail kiosk, too, that we decided to keep. And I, I neglected to put in the, the curbing is not a problem, and the downlighting, these are, these are all, these are all fine. We wanna be good neighbors, too. So, other than that, you know, being an infill project, you know, this is really good planning. It's got a lot of site design work that really is a bonus and a plus for all the things that folks are really concerned about in terms of trying to cut down on traffic, make sure that nobody's flooded and that you're not trying to impact their, their, their homes, their neighborhoods. It's consistent with the comp plan. It's a far reduction in the density in the comp plan. It's consistent with the land development code. We have a staff recommendation. We have a planning board recommendation. And I think, like we say every time here, if there's anything we can do to make this better for the folks in the neighborhood, you know, we're happy to listen. We're happy to be, I wish Dr. Segevi was here, too. He would say he's, you know, he's always listening, so.
Joey, I don't have any other cards. You did adopt all of the planning board recommendations, correct?
Correct.
I saw that in there. And Stephen there in the development order?
Yes. We would ask you to also include the bamboo buffer. And, and with the second reading, we'll bring back exhibits that show basically all these conditions in the development.
You want, okay, so that's B? I'm looking for the development order. B, C, or D? Help me out. D? Is it D?
D.
That makes sense.
It's D.
Yeah, okay. So, that's where you want the bamboo?
Correct.
Included in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Good deal. Any questions for Joey or Stephen?
Mr. Mayor, just pretty much more questions, comments. I agree with the planning board recommendation of, of, of the, of the masonry wall, and y'all have addressed that. As well as the movement of the dumpster and the curbs. My concern with this project, and I'm all for infill development, by the way. Now, we say that pretty much most development that will occur in Ormond Beach from here on in will probably most likely be infill development. What makes this project a little bit unique is it's bordered by two residential roadways, which are quite narrow. And I understand the residents' concerns about the traffic on those roadways, the increased traffic on those roadways, the lack of pedestrian facilities on those roadways, no sidewalks. One of the only ways I think I could support this is if we look at making Highland Avenue one-way east from US one to Ridgewood, and Dix Avenue one-way rest, west from Ridgewood to US one with directional cuts because you have access through that Dollar General store onto Dix Avenue. And I think what we wanna do is try to prevent the traffic from going back into the residential neighborhood and out to US one and eliminate the trips coming down Highland to the project, let them come in off of US one onto Highland into the project. Again, primarily because of the traffic impacts of those, you know, very narrow residential streets. That would be my recommendation. I know we don't like to typically change traffic patterns on, on city roadways, but it would, you know, kind of address the residents' concerns as far as the increased traffic and again, lack of pedestrian facilities.
That's a huge, huge change. Without any input from the residents, Stephen?
Right, so, so one of the things we suggested at the planning board meeting, as there was interest from the residents, was to hold a, a, lack of a better term, a neighborhood meeting. And that's what we did. If you recall, with the land use that I referenced earlier, there was such an upswelling that that, in essence, led to the residential traffic calming. So, what staff would recommend is to hold a meeting, you know, send out notices and, and engage the interest. Obviously, you can do whatever you like with this. If that's the recommendation, that's fine. But I haven't heard any residents come to us and either agree or disagree with, with the one-way in the streets.
Commissioner Sargent.
On US one, turning into this development, is there a de-acceleration lane, or is it a straight, just turn-in?
It's a straight turn.
Is there any way to have it de-acceleration lane there? 'Cause you have cars that are gonna be doing forty-five, fifty miles an hour and all of a sudden turning in.
It, it would be a decision that's far beneath transportation, and you'd have to meet certain warrants in order to do that. So, we can certainly ask them. The engineer might have additional input.
If you could repeat the question. This is Steve Oswald with Parker, Minter, and Bergen Associates. Just wanna make sure I understand.
Sure. Turning into the entrance off of US one, is there a de-acceleration lane where you come off and?
Yes, there's a dedicated de-acceleration lane. The OT, I guess through a study several years back, kinda made this a point of where everything's funneled from US one south. This was the point of connection. So, you can't, for instance, at the existing entrance from the Dollar General, you can't turn left if you're forced to turn right. Harold, I appreciate the comments regarding, you know, change in flow directions, and, you know, we looked at that. It just, it's, I thought I heard you say Highland you would want to be.
One-way east.
One-way east. Again, the, the, the purpose of kinda the modifications we made at the entrance, you can see kinda there's a big sweeping radius. One of the issues that I heard from the residents through the neighborhood meetings we've had, and again, this has been going on for several years now, was keeping some of the delivery trucks that are now forced to be through the neighborhoods, giving them a way to stay out of that area. So, providing the one-way ingress from Highland, there, you can see kinda the, a big, a bigger sweeping radius kinda near the middle of the Dollar General to allow them to move without having to go through the neighborhood to Ridgewood, turn left, and then come down Dix. It's, it's, the intent is to try to keep them as much internal as we possibly can. I'm always wary of changing traffic patterns, just from emergency vehicles, et cetera. There's a lot that goes into it. And I think there was a study already performed in this area, if I'm not mistaken. Stephen can probably elaborate a little bit more. That's where the traffic calming, you know, started. And we've provided sidewalks the best we can as far as in front of the limits of, you know, all our boundaries.
And just to point out one other thing, too, that I, I, I think it's intuitive to this, but the idea of how we laid it out was trying to keep it internal. We're trying to keep the traffic off of those adjacent residential roadways, and obviously, if something has to go here. It's, it's entitled, it has some development right, of course, it's gotta come back to you guys. But, you know, trying to do something that you have an opportunity to where you can capture that internal traffic and funnel it through the existing curb cut there between the Dollar General and the project, that, that's, that's something that was very important to us because we're trying to cut down on impacting those residents. So, you know, I, we'd love to be part of that discussion, that if it does move in a direction of where those roads wanna head in a one-way. But I don't think it's going to be us who are gonna be causing the issue. I think it's, I, I think it's other traffic that may be utilizing those roadways.
Commissioner Sargent.
I'm sorry.
He still had.
Yes, I'm sorry.
On that stormwater pond, is there gonna be a fence around it?
That was one of the discussion items with the planning board. Again, I, I kinda would prefer to keep it consistent with the land development code, meaning it's designed in accordance with the proper slopes. Because you, you start getting into, do you fence every retention pond or detention pond? We've designed it so it's, there's literal plantings, there's a fountain, the slopes meet the land development code, possibly additional signage. I always think, you know, if you do fence it, then someone is in there, then you have to jump the fence to get to them. That was one of the items I think I need to, I guess, further discuss with staff as far as what, how to best implement that suggestion.
'Cause my heartbreak on that is, you know, we had that child just recently that passed away that wandered off into it. So, I just think if we can prevent something like that from happening in the future, I think that's very important.
I think that's, if you give us the opportunity to come back to you guys, and, you know, we'll look at that, and, and I would imagine encouraging, 'cause I, I wish I had the client here to say that, yes.
Sure.
Let's go for it. But if it's a safety issue, then that's something that I'm sure that we can talk about and make sure that we have incorporated for moving forward, if that becomes part of the motion.
I'm glad, Harold, I wanted you over to this project.
If you would, come up to the microphone, John. John, if you would, come up to the microphone, please.
Every time he says, we'll take it back, we'll consider it, that's obviously a fair answer. Anything that is discussed here, we'll do whatever it does for the community, the park, for the community.
So, he's, he surprised me.
And then back there waiting for the ideal time. It's like, well, somebody could say.
That's, and that's fine. So, it sounds like we have buy-in from the, the actual property owners. I'm trying to make this, you know, something that we can address, so.
Well, I think this, this all started off, what, probably in two thousand and six, Mr. Mayor, two thousand and seven. And I think finally, this project has come to something that is, is very good for the community. I don't think we can solve the traffic problems. But I think this is the best that we can get in this area. Obviously, I would like no traffic on either one of those streets, but that's not gonna happen. Making them one-way, that's probably gonna take an active guy, it sounds like. But I, I think I'm, I'm good with this project, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Just with those, a couple.
Couple changes. Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, my, my only concern is the, is the exit, the one-way exit that I'm looking between that one white building and the orange building up there. I live near an area where there's a no turn, but people do turn on it all the time. And, and is it, is it gonna be designed so that it's almost like impossible to go? Okay.
That's exactly right. It's gonna have signage. It's gonna have, you know, elevated curbs. It's, it is going to be as discouraging as possible. And, you know, sometimes you get the intent that some folks said, when you have a one-way in, that it's, it's a one-way, but it's not as apparent. This is, you know, given the trajectory of it, given how we're trying to elevate those curbs to prevent any possibility of the other direction and the additional signage, it's, every opportunity is just to make that one direction in, so you don't get, you don't get the opportunity to come out.
Okay. And my, just my last question, the buffers, how, how many feet are the buffers?
The, the buffer is twenty-five, except around all the residential, it's fifty.
Fifty?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
A, a minimum of fifty. Obviously, it's very expans, it's extensive in the rear, but it's a minimum fifty.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talland.
Yeah, thank you. Couple comments. First, I do like the idea, I mean, I'm, I'm a na, I'm gonna say it right now, Chief Godfrey, I'm a native plant person. But I think bamboo, particularly if you do the clumping bamboo, would be the perfect plant material to, to provide that buffer for the residents. So, I would, I'm all for that. And the, the wall. I know we're trying to preserve the plantings around there, and when you do a masonry wall, you do destroy that integrity. But I also think that it's really important as well. Thank you, and I think as far as the design goes with the traffic, traffic is a problem, and, and particularly on those narrow roads. And I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Bryley, on that. But I do think that this project did the best you could ever do addressing the traffic with the one-way in off Highland and the exit out the other way. And using those curbs as a deterrent, I think is, is very smart. I appreciate the open space, the thirty-three percent open space. And I am also a big safety proponent with children. Those apartments, I'm not sure of the demographics that you think you're going to attract, but I imagine there's gonna be children in that area, especially if you're having a dog park and, as well. I think a fence around a retention pond, I agree. I would not want fences around every retention pond in the city. But it's close proximity to buildings. You get a little toddler wandering out a door in, you know, twenty-five feet, they're in a, a pond. That would be a, a, just a terrible thing to have to look at. So, I applaud you for taking a crazy little space in as many years that you've tried to make it fit and make it appealing to the neighbors. I know no neighbor ever wants anything, but I think you've done a very good job addressing that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Talland and Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Yes, sir. And again, I, I applaud the project. My concern was the traffic. Obviously, I'm kind of in minority on that one, but as far as the retention pond, and I think we've, we've kinda had a standing thing in the city of Ormond Beach. We typically don't fence retention ponds because fences are great about catching debris, and they're just somewhat, you know, not, they're, they're somewhat unsightly. I think about willow pond, no fence. I can count up pretty much every retention pond in the city, and we don't have fences. Because we do such a gradual slope that, and, and unfortunately, and, and to Commissioner Sargent, I mean, unfortunately, I know these things do happen on occasion. But if we can, I'm not, I'm not crazy about doing a, a fence around the retention pond. I'll just go on record saying that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joey. Thank you, John. It's clear that you have listened and brought back a project that is, not that the other one was bad, but this is just so much better. It's clear that you listened and tried to make good accommodations for the residents, and this is even better. So, thank you for that. I know this project is gonna help our downtown and our Four Corners area, because I know families that live in this area that on the weekends will ride their bikes to have an ice cream or go fishing or whatever it is. They don't take their cars. They get out and use either walking or biking, other modes of transportation. And that'll be a positive for, it's close enough to the downtown that I think it's gonna encourage the life of the downtown. We already have a walkable downtown with a lot more people than we've ever had, and this is just gonna add to that. So, unless there's any other questions, we'll.
this is just going to add to that. So unless there's any other questions, we'll call the vote on 9B.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-35.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions?
Do we need to include the bamboo and?
I don't think on B.
Maybe on D.
Yeah, it would be on the issuance of the development order.
Thank you. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9C.
Ordinance number 2023-36 and ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts of official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone a portion of a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 0.72 acres located at 145 North Young Street. Belushi County Parcel Number 4215-04-01-0270. From R-3, single-family medium density to planned residential development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-36, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any additional cards, just need a motion.
Move with approval.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9D.
Ordinance number 2023-37 and ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development and planned residential development to be located at 145 North Young Street, Belushi County Parcel Number 4215-04-01-0270. To be known as the Ormond Enclave, authorizing the development of 64 multifamily residential units and associated site improvements under certain conditions, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-37, read by title only.
Again, I don't have any additional cards. If somebody wants to make a motion and include the, the bamboo?
Go ahead, Lori.
No, it's because I move that we accept ordinance number 2023-37, including adding clumping bamboo, as described by the planning board. Or, the rear of the property, is that where it's going?
Along the walled residential area.
Along the walled area that abuts the residence.
You okay with that, Stephen?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. We'll move to 9E. Thank you both.
Ordinance number 2023-38 and ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 0.76 acres located at 121 East Granada Boulevard, Belushi County Parcel Number 4214-05-04-0051. From B-4, central business to planned business development, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-38, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on 9E and F, correct?
Correct. So this one has two parts, again, a zoning map amendment and then the issuance of development order. The property is located at 121 East Granada Boulevard. There is a Starbucks next to it. The golf course is to the north, and then the SunTrust and the Publix are to the west. The property has a land use of general commercial. That general commercial allows 32 units per acre. For this property, it would be a maximum density of 24 units per acre. The zoning allows 26 units per acre, which when applied to this property would allow 20. So there's, there's a four-unit difference between the land use and the zoning. The existing site has been demolished and vacant for a number of years. Interestingly enough, there's an FPNL vault located on the property that is very substantial to beachside and has to stay. So part of the site challenges was designing a building around that FPNL vault. Again, the zoning map amendment provides a framework to go from the B4 zoning district to the planned business development, which then leads to the issuance of the development order. The development order seeks the 24 residential units. One thing that we looked at being in the downtown is the consistency with the downtown master plan. Downtown master plan encourages redevelopment, infill of blighted properties, and the establishment of residential uses along the corridor. So the property application is consistent with the downtown master plan. This exhibit, I thought, was a good exhibit. It shows kind of multi-layers. On the ground floor is the parking area, which we'll have another exhibit. But the main building is focused in the two areas. And then there's a dog walk area here, and amenities areas here. So there's really four aspects of the building. And the building doesn't go all the way to property line. So there are some setbacks on all sides of the building. And then there's a, a urban edge on the side, again, not bringing the building all the way forward, that would allow some of the utilities and, and roll-off areas here. The, this is the first floor without the building, so you can see how they've maximized the parking. There is 40 parking spaces provided. Land development code requires 36. Again, just another shot of the outline of the building, kind of centered in the building. The applicant also has a, a flyby, which I think will be very useful in seeing this project. As part of the project, there were architectural elevations that were provided. The correspondence, or the reasons why we're going through a development order is to go from the 20 units allowed by zoning to the 24 units allowed by the land use, and also the length of the building. Anything over 100, 180 linear feet requires this process. There's no criteria for or against it, it just has to go through a public hearing. There was two correspondence received. One was not in favor of the project. I believe this individual also spoke at the planning board, may be here tonight. And then Ormond Main Street has reviewed this project since the very beginnings of concept plan, and they provided a letter of support for the project. The planning board recommended approval with a 6-0 vote for both the zoning map amendment and the issuance of development order, and the applicant is here to address the, the commission.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
Great.
Yep. And Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole for the applicant.
Well, thanks, Mayor. That's exactly right. I'm at 149 South Ridgewood in Daytona Beach. Sorry, got a little something caught in there. I'm, I'm excited to be here. I think you guys have been waiting for some years to have somebody actually show up and, and build a residential project on your main street. And I'm thankful to say my good friend, Brian Collier, has stepped up to the plate. We've got a whole team of folks here to answer any questions that you guys have. I'm not going to give you a long PowerPoint presentation like Joey, but I do have a super cool video that we're going to show you guys. I want to first thank Steve and his staff. We've spent the last, better part of a couple of years, you know, going through all of the, the details to get to this, this place where we're able to present this to you guys. And so we're, we're very thankful for Steve's recommendation for his very thorough report, as he always does, his presentation tonight. But you guys have a lot of backup information. I think that, as we always talk about, checks off all the boxes, the comprehensive plan consistency, you know, consistency with your downtown plan, consistency with your land development regulations. He's got a very thorough report that I'm not going to go through like Joey did, but it's in there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. You know, it talks about things like the sense of place, you know, the walkability, all, all the stuff we've been, all the buzzwords that we've been talking about for a project like this are, are in this project. And so I think with that, you know, of course, as Steve mentioned, we spent a great deal of time with Ormond Main Street, both their, their board and their design review committee. And everybody really loves the project. So the planning board loved it, unanimous from them, from Steve Spraker and his staff as well. So here to answer any questions, but I've got a video that I really want to show you. So let's do that first, and I'll try to tell you a little bit about it. So this is, this is the, the work of, of Mr. Bill Chafin, who's back in the audience as well, and he's, he can answer any questions about the architecture. But I'm just going to kind of give you the layman's view of it. But this is coming along Granada, looking towards the river. So that gray in the background, the colors aren't that great on this, but that's the river. So as you come around the project, you see a lot of really nice color. Bill's incorporated this really cool blue glass. You'll see landscaping around the perimeter, some of which you're starting to see on, on this edge. The green in the middle there is a place for your dogs to be able to go out and play when you're, when you're living there. You'll start to see, as we come around, a lot of open, open patios with outdoor living area, which are really cool. It's kind of hard to see from the scale. But as we come around the, the side, on the right, of course, is the Oceanside Country Club. You're going to start to see our amenity area to the right-hand side, as well as some recreational opportunities that we're talking about, including potentially pickleball, which everybody, of course, loves now, and some other things might be happening in that bottom left-hand side. And once you start to see the, the lower edge of the building where the windows are, you'll start to be able to look down and see where the parking garage is, which is hidden underneath the building, which is really cool. We also have underneath there stormwater vaults, so this site is going to be retrofitted with, with stormwater management, which, you know, doesn't exist now. A lot of these things that were built in this vicinity were done without stormwater. So again, you're seeing a lot of vegetation between us and the golf course. You're starting to get a better view of our kind of resort-ish pool area. And then, and this is probably the best view to see how it works underneath the, the building with parking. And so as Steve talked about, it's kind of, the kind of two buildings connected with a, with a, with a main corridor in between. One of the super cool things about this project, I don't know of any place in, in Ormond Beach or even in Belushi County that has this, but when you come in the elevators, Bill somehow has managed, so when you come up the elevator, you open the door and you're in your living room, which seems like in some bigger cities I've seen that, but I don't know about here. So we're, we're in the big city now. And so again, I think that as you look at this and you see it in context, you start to, to appreciate some of the things that Steve was saying about the, the urban forms and, and the type of things we've been, we've been talking about with these form-based codes and everything. And that's what it looks like. So when you get the chance to see it three-dimensionally, moving like this, I think it really sort of, it sort of makes the point without me having to say a whole lot more. I will mention, though, that the front there you see has a pretty substantial wall, which kind of gives you a, a feeling of, of presence along the, the edge, along the sidewalk, which creates, you know, a little more of an urban edge than the building itself, because the building's back just a little bit. And then with some really nice landscaping and tasteful signage as well. So that's it.
Great. Any questions for Rob?
Commissioner Sargent. For the record, I've had a phone conversation with Mr. Merrill last week, and I had a few questions regarding where they're going to site prep construction, and he advised that they're going to do some of that behind the bank, which is very nice, that we're not going to have trucks out front and disturb the traffic flow. I have one question for you, though, is I'm, I'm kind of concerned about Starbucks' drive-through during the construction period. Is there going to be a big fence up? Because that drive-through is...
Yes.
I just don't want dust to fly in my food when I go through there.
Yeah, so, so you still have those masks that we used to, right?
Yes, yes.
No, I, I, I think that, you know, whether it's going to have some, some, you know, they put the fences that have something that keeps the dust from going through, I think that's going to be part of it as well. But, you know, when you're building a building like this, they built skyscrapers in Manhattan, and they do it in a little tiny. So it, it's going to be done in a way that Brian's made as much of the arrangements ahead of time as possible, so there's not going to be disturbance of the adjoining businesses. But I got to tell you, I, I think they're going to be happy to have a whole bunch of new residents right next door to them. And certainly all of the restaurants, all of the, you know, the Publix, the, you know, the banks, the offices, you know, having, having heads in beds right on Main Street is, is critical to, to sort of the momentum we've been trying to start here.
I think this is a great project, Mr. Mayor. We have a dilapidated site that we finally have a developer after 10 years roughly, putting a high-quality project in. I just, it's very good. The only other question I have is on the, FDOT has proposed, and I wish I could get this on the main screen, I don't know how we can do that, but they're going to have a median right there at Starbucks. Have y'all seen that?
Yes, I don't think that's all settled yet. I know we've had conversations. Luke is here from Zep.
Because that's going to be a direct, left dot only. Did you see that, Mr. Mayor?
I did.
See, that would be the outlet of this project right here.
Luke Colich was Zep Tony and Associates. We were shared the plans by FDOT during the planning stage, and we reached out to their representative and made sure that we're going to have full access, you know, coming in and out of our site, left turns will be allowed. And then they did confirm that we will have full access.
Wonderful.
We have a paper copy of that as well, but we should.
Great. Great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Riley and then Commissioner Persis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for full disclosure, I have, I did speak with Mr. Collier some time back on this project, after the public meeting, and Mr. Porter, Rob, we never got to talk about it, I'm sorry.
I saw you in the hallway.
Yeah, we did. We, we just, yeah. But, you know, 1993, 1994, I was appointed to the Downtown Revitalization Task Force. And later on, in '96, Ormond Main Street, when it started. And this was the exact type of infill development we talked about in our downtown, where residents could live downtown, walk or downtown. We, we identified that we needed residential uses in our downtown. And actually, when I saw this, I got kind of excited about it. I think you all have done a good job with it, and I think it's exactly what we need on the beach side, especially on this lot.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Persis.
Yes. I just want to say, the first time I saw this, the plans for this, I was so excited. I wanted to buy one right away. I think, I think, I think this is an epic project for Ormond Beach. It's exciting to have this new kind of housing for our residents to possibly buy. It is consistent with our downtown master plan, has underground parking. You know, there's two buildings. It's, it's attractive. It's just something that you want to look at. The walkability, you know, restaurants, shopping, Publix is right there and Starbucks, which, you know, I would be there every single day. Dog park area, I mean, people love their dogs. It has everything that a resident could want there. I love the open patios, the views, the pool. Everything is great. So I just want to commend the builders, the developers, everybody. You just did a fabulous job for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Tolland.
And I didn't need to talk to you, because I went to the planning board meeting, and I really listened to everything prior. So I, I felt fairly comfortable with this project. And I do want, also want to say congratulations. I think the design is very attractive. I love the way it's compliant with, inconsistent with the downtown master plan and the downtown overlay district. Everything about it checks those boxes that we're talking about. And the only, the only first concern I had, of course, was height. You know, everyone's concerned about height, and a few residents had talked to me. But when you think about the Ormond Heritage just being two blocks away, you know, it, it's, it's very consistent with that whole, that whole area. And there was one comment I know at the planning board that a resident felt like we were losing our small beach town feel. But I respect that comment, but I totally disagree with it. I think this is what we need in our downtown area with the walkability, and it'll just increase it, and I, I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll echo all those comments. I've been excited about this since I first heard about it and saw some kind of draft renderings. But it does check a lot of boxes as far as smart growth and infill development, exactly what a city would be looking for, particularly in their downtown. And, you know, I'm excited. It hasn't been built yet, and nobody's moved in yet, but I'm excited for the people that are going to get to live there. That's awesome for them. And they're going to absolutely love it. And every good thing I said about the Lowman's condos up on Halifax across from Oceanside, I'll say that for this project, and maybe even more, because they're closer to walk to the beach, and it's a convenient walk to the river for them. Publix is right there. Ormond Memorial Art Museum is right there. So many exciting things that they'll be able to do. And they'll just, they're going to fall in love with our city, support our businesses and our community. And so I'm encouraged of all that. So thank you for all that. And if there's nothing else.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 2023-38.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9F.
Ordinance number 2023-39 and ordinance authorizing the execution
Ordinance number 2023-39, an ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be located at 121 East Granada Boulevard. Volusia County parcel number 4214-05-04-0051, to be known as 121 East, authorizing the development of 24 multifamily residential units and associated site improvements under certain conditions, establishing conditions and expirations of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-39, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any additional cards, just need a motion.
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-39.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions for Stephen or Mr. Merrill? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Yep, thank you all. 9G.
Ordinance number 2023-40, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map to change the designation of two parcels of real property totaling 52 plus or minus acres located at 860 Hall Road and 1399 Hall Trail from Volusia County Industrial to Ormond Beach Heavy Industrial, including a map annotation to limit the floor area ratio to 0.60, authorizing transmittal, providing for conflict, providing for severability, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-40, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on this item.
This is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, and a little bit different than what we normally do, because it's over 50 acres. What we'll do is we'll transmit this to state agencies, Volusia County Growth Management Commission, get their comments, and bring it back to you in October. If you recall, the Halifax paving annexed into the city, they are doing a office, a new build, required utility connection for water and sewer. Part of that, that required annexation. The next step is to provide a land use designation. We're required once properties are annexed into the city to give them a land use and zoning. The existing Volusia County land use is industrial, it allows a floor area ratio of 0.6, so we're matching that with a heavy industrial with a 0.06. The property is shown here on the screen. This doesn't include any other property but the Halifax paving parcel, and it applies to the whole property. In our review and our staff report, we found it consistent with policy 2.52. It's an appropriate use of land. The existing use of Halifax paving is not changing, they're going to continue to do what they've always done, and now they're going to add an office to support their business. This is an administrative amendment because it's based on annexation. There will be no infrastructure impact because we've limited the floor ratio. The planning board recommended approval with a 6 to 0 vote, and available if there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen?
Commissioner Sargent.
This is not the property where there's going to be fuel tanks, and, I don't know, I got an email about that, and I just, I think this is a separate parcel than what that was referring to.
Correct. So that parcel is at 874 Hall Road, so it's this parcel currently owned by the FEC Railroad, so that doesn't have anything to do with Halifax paving. This property is unincorporated Volusia County, and I believe they're going through a site planning process with the county, so if there are any comments on that project, the county would be the appropriate entity to provide those comments to.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thank you. I don't have any cards on 9G.
Move approval.
Second. Any further discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9H.
Ordinance number 2023-41, an ordinance amending Chapter 1, General Administration, Article 3, Definitions and Acronyms. Section 1-22, Definitions of Terms and Words. Chapter 2, District and General Regulations. Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map. Section 2-02, Future Land Use Map Designations and Zoning Districts. Chapter 2, District and General Regulations. Article 2, District Regulations. Section 2-07, Zoning District Designations. Chapter 2, District and General Regulations. Article 2, District Regulations. Section 2-33i-2, Reserved. Chapter 2, District and General Regulations. Article 4, Conditional and Special Exception Regulations. Section 2-57, Criteria for Review of Special Conditional and Special Exemption of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code by Creating the i-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, Providing Use Definitions and Creating Conditions for Work, Conditional and Special Exception Uses, Repealing All Inconsistent Ordnances or Parts thereof, Providing for Severability, and Setting forth an Effective Date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-41, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and Stephen. I'll ask you to speak briefly on this, and then there's only six more after this for you to speak on. We're getting there.
So we have a heavy industrial land use, and we have an i-2 zoning that's reserved. So there was always the intention of creating an i-2 zoning district. So what this amendment does, it creates definitions, creates the zoning district, it creates the criteria for the zoning district. This doesn't rezone any specific property, it provides a zoning district for future action by the commission. This zoning isn't intended to be applied to existing city areas. Likely it'll be very focused in and around where the Halifax paving site is. Planning board recommended approval with a 6 to 0 vote.
Any questions for Stephen?
I have a question, but I just have a comment, and I think this might be the appropriate time. So I too had questioned, after receiving an email about that site being heavy industrial, and whether that was the Belvedere terminals, the fuel farm, per se. So I did have a discussion with staff and Stephen about it, and I think this is very appropriate after we've annexed in the land last time. This is very appropriate zoning and all that, but I do want to go on record that even though we can't do anything about the Volusia County property where that fuel farm is going to be looked at, or most likely built out or proposed, I think that's something that I am definitely not in favor of for many reasons. One could be environmental reasons, other would be traffic of 12 trucks every, loads an hour going up to the railroad track, and thinking, you know, we are growing out that way with development in the future. So my thought was, you know how we drive down Granada, and we see the cement trucks on the right-hand side on Granada before US-1, the cement facility, I don't know what it's called? When I first moved to town, I'm like, why in the world is that in the middle of our town? Well, when you think about it, Ormond was not, that was like way far out, and that was considered the right place. And now we're growing the other directions, and we're, you know, I would hate to see a fuel farm in the middle of where we're trying to grow. And I know residential won't be there, and it is an area where it is, you know, heavy industrial, and it probably will be protected from residential. But I would like to avoid that look in the future. So I just felt compelled to put it on the record. I know it has nothing to do with this discussion, but I just needed to put it, and I didn't know where else to put it. So thank you for listening to me.
Anyone else on 9H?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9I.
Ordinance number 2023-42, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of one parcel of real property totaling 0 plus, 0.24 plus or minus acres located at 204 Magnolia Drive, Volusia County Parcel Number 4214-20-02-0011, from public institutional to low-density residential, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-42, read by title only.
Thank you. And Stephen, I'll let you give us a brief background.
When the hotel and the related residential was coming through, we noticed that there was a lone parcel of public institutional land use. There's an existing single-family house, that land use doesn't allow residential, so there's an administrative amendment to correct that. So our goal is to take that from public institutional low-density residential. Planning board recommend approval. This is an administrative amendment, in our mind, to correct an error that should have been corrected previously.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen?
Chair, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I'll move approval of 2023-42.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9J.
Ordinance number 2023-43, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Ormond Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of a portion of one parcel of real property totaling 5.2 plus or minus acres located at 901 Airport Road, Volusia County Parcel Number 4238-01-40-0010, from light industrial utilities to open space conservation, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2023-43, read by title only.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen on this item?
I have approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Stephen, was there anything you wanted to add? All right. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9K.
Resolution number 2023-116, a resolution authorizing the execution and issuance of an amended special exception development order to allow the addition of vacuum stalls within the front yard under certain conditions at Mr. Carwash, located at 49 South Young Street, which is in the B-5 Service Commercial Zoning District, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2023-116, read by title only.
Thank you, and I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak briefly on this item as well.
This is a special exception at 49 South Young Street. The goal is to add vacuum stalls in the front area of the property, to remove an access point that is existing on US-1, and to install front yard landscaping. If you recall, this used to be sparkle, sparkling shine, had an intense use on the frontage of US-1, cleared a canopy in a bunch of operations in front of a house. That has been removed, and Mr. Carwash now owns it. They're seeking to allow the vacuums on their property, they're going to maintain the ones in the rear of the property, but this would allow them to have a better business flow, be more efficient. There's an existing access out located here. Their site plan proposes to close that access point, which is a good thing, because it's too close to the intersection, so they'll do a heavy landscape buffer, and they've also proposed a very low vacuum, so they're not the traditional vacuums that you've seen throughout other Carwashes. To their credit, they've come up with a solution that basically doesn't, that makes these less visible, and then landscaping is designed to make it compatible from the roadway. In your packet, there was an exhibit, the total height was 3 feet 9 inches, again, should be screened by the landscaping. The planning board did recommend approval with a 6 to 0 vote, and the applicant is here. If there are any questions on that?
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen? Any questions for the applicant?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Jeff, I have a card from you, if you wanted to speak, but...
I'll get a little chat in.
Commissioner, any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 9L.
Resolution number 2023-117, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving the preliminary plat for Archer's Mill Phase 2, shown within Phase 3 of the Plantation Oaks Planned Residential Development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2023-117, read by title only.
Thank you. And Stephen, if you'll speak on L and M.
So both of these applications are preliminary plats, they're both located within the Plantation Oaks Planned Residential Development. These are a general location. This is the entrance of the manufactured home, so it's in essence across the street. This is a FPN alleasement. This is a little easier to see, so this is the entire Plantation Oaks development. Phase 2 is located here, and the next one is Phase 3, which should be located here. So basically, they're building out the planned residential development. Preliminary plat is, leads to construction plans, so they'll go do constructions, they'll come back to the commission for a final plat, which is the subdivision of land. The planning board recommended approval of both of them with a 6 to 0 vote, and the applicant is here if he needs questions on either one of them.
Thank you. Any questions for Stephen or the applicant?
I move approval of resolution number 2023-117.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And, Steve, I didn't want to cut you off, you're okay?
Okay.
9M.
Resolution number 2023-118, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Ormond Beach, Florida, approving the preliminary plat for Archer's Mill Phase 3, shown within Phase 3 of the Plantation Oaks Planned Residential Development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2023-118, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, no cards.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. We'll close the public hearings, move to second reading of ordinances, 10A.
Ordinance number 2023-34, an ordinance amending Section 5-1 Definitions of Article 1 in general of Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl. Amending Section 5-10, Animals Constituting a Nuisance, Prohibited of Article 1 in general of Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl. Amending Section 5-13, Feeding of Feral or Stray Animals, Prohibited of Article 1 in general of Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl. Amending Section 5-23, Running at Large, Prohibited of Article 2, Livestock of Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl. Amending Section 5-25, Notice of Impounding of Article 2, Livestock of Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl. Amending Section 5-62, Licenses Annual Fee of Article 3, Dogs and Cats, Other Animals of Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl. Amending Section 5-67, Duplicate Tags of Article 3, Dogs and Cats, Other Animals of Chapter 5, Animals and Fowl. Amending Section 5-69, Running at Large, Prohibited of Article 3, Dogs and Cats, Other of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending 5-70, impounding of violations of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending Section 5-72, responsibility for payment and reclaiming after impoundment of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending Section 5-78, dangerous dogs of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending Section 5-79, exceptions of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending Section 5-80, investigation and determination of dangerous dog of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending Section 5-81, action to be taken by owners, keepers of dangerous dogs of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending Section 5-82, reserved of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, amending Section 5-83, optional action of Article Three, Dogs and Cats, other animals of Chapter Five, Animals and Fowl, of the city of Ormond Beach Code of Ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2023-34, read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, is this Taylor's payback?
Thank you, Susan, and we'll get you some oxygen. I'll ask City Attorney Randy Hayes to speak on this item.
Well, this is second reading of the dangerous dog ordinance, where we amended it to, in a way that's still consistent with Florida law, it just adds a second category of aggressive dog, and what it will do is allow our animal control officers to get involved in the process a little earlier, identify some of these dogs that could potentially become dangerous at a subsequent date. There's fines associated with that. There's a due process that's been included in there. So this is intended to address some of the concerns that were raised by residents a few months ago, and this is also consistent with an approach that at least one other jurisdiction has taken. So it has not been challenged yet, from what we can tell, so we're pretty confident that since it doesn't contravene Florida law that it would be enforced if it is challenged.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy?
I move approval of ordinance number 2023-34.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? If not, please call the vote.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Resolutions 11A.
Resolution number 2023-119, a resolution authorizing the execution of an amendment and restatement of shared parking lot usage agreement between the city and NN Rate LP, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2023-119, read by title only.
Thank you. Stephen, if you'll give us just a brief background on this one.
This is a request to amend a parking agreement. I'm not sure if they have... Basically, in 2002, there was a joint agreement between the city and Sparkle and Shine to jointly develop a parking area. That agreement didn't expressly allow them to put the vacuums there. Vacuums are there today. They intended, the new owner would like to keep them. Staff has no objection. It is not city property. They own the property that those vacuums would be on, and staff's recommending approval.
Any questions for Stephen?
Move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Talland?
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryley?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Staff action items, 12A, we need a Florida League of Cities voting delegate for the conference in Orlando.
I nominate Mayor Partington.
I thought, I was, I'm not quick enough on the uptake. I will be there, and that's fine, but I didn't know if somebody else wanted to do it. It's always good to develop those skills if anybody else is interested. Ain't going to be there.
I mean, I'll do it if you don't want to.
The, if you...
I mean, I, do they usually say the mayor does it? The mayor is the one that usually?
Not always. It's fine with me if you want to do it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Persis, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Moved in seconded, and all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign, and thank you. All right. Reports, suggestions, and requests, and tonight we start with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to address the residents that came tonight to talk about the problem house on Willmet. That is, we expect that that'll be taken down within 30 days. As you know, there's a code enforcement process, and sometimes it takes longer than we would like it to happen to get that... You can't hear me? No? Can you hear me?
I'm better.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I'm here to tell you that the code enforcement process is working for that home on Willmet that the individuals came to talk about. The chief advised me tonight that it should be down within 30 days. So I know that it's troublesome and it's a problem area, but the code enforcement process requires a certain amount of time to go through, so staff is actively working that item. Secondly, I wanted to report that the police department presented to Sergeant Michael Garner the Police Officer of the Year Award for 2022, and some of you were there to see that. And likewise, they designated Community Service Officer Shannon Champion to receive the Civilian Employee of the Year for 2022. We're so very proud of what our police department does every day, and it was nice to see those individuals recognized. And I believe they are selected by their peers, so that's even a more important designation. I don't really have much other, you know, there's a lot of community events happening. Summer Sounds is this weekend, which is, will feature the band, The Hindenburgs, I'm not sure about that one, and Traces of Gold. So that's on Friday at the Casements. Movies on the Halifax will happen on August 4th, The Princess Diaries, and you'll be back before I can report the other ones. So, and I also just want to take a moment to express my deep appreciation to Officer Stokes for all that he has done in his years of service with our community. I've had the pleasure of attending Dare when he was in charge of Dare, and just see the kids scream and run up to him with such excitement every time that he would be there. And I always loved how they brought donuts for the kids as their treat at the end of the time, the five or six weeks of the course, and he would make light of cops bringing donuts, and it was very fun. But I will tell you, I have personally witnessed Mr. Joe Daniels and Officer Stokes at the Dunkin' Donut and enjoying donuts, so that's always good fun to see them there. I like to pick on both of them, so. It's, you know, we have such a wonderful community here in Ormond Beach, and I feel personally blessed every day to be a part of the city, and I am richly blessed by a commission that does their homework and deliberates with great thought and care on every issue that comes before you. And so I just want to appreciate your work on the budget earlier this evening. I've spoken to all of you in the last two days so many times. I didn't even know who was coming or going at one point today because we had so many meetings, but, so I thank you for your time and energy that you put into the budget. It's always a difficult process, but you do an amazing job for our community, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley.
I texted a picture of Officer Stokes to my daughter tonight, and she said OMG, no, with three O's on it, and I love him so much. And it's, as you all, it's just great to hear your children say anything positive about school, you know, and feel the excitement. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. And City Attorney Randy Hayes. Thank you, Randy. Tonight, we start with Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo what Joyce said about congratulating Sergeant Michael Gardner and Civilian of the Year Shannon Champion. It's an awesome honor for both of them, and we're grateful to have them. I also would like to say thank you to the Budget Advisory Board and to Kelly McGuire and Chris Byall for working on this budget. It's difficult, you know, as we are, you know, we have about a million dollars in there for, to upgrade the sound system in here, video, the webpage, things that cost, like I said, almost a million dollars. This stuff hasn't been updated in 30 years, unfortunately, and now's the time we have to do it. So thank you to everyone that, you know, helped us prepare for that. Great Independence Day celebration. Staff did an amazing job. Robert, y'all always do an amazing job. Thank you. Thank you, Joyce, for helping those residents that came to speak tonight, and also thank you to you and staff for helping to clean up a few homeless sites that we've identified throughout the community. One was on Orchard, just north of Office Depot. I think the hard part with these sites is a lot of these parcels are owned by resident, or not residents really, people that live out of state, and they don't even know what's going on on their property. So unless they're identified and fill out the paperwork with the police department, our hands are tied. And just this one site, we had over 40 bags of trash, eight shopping carts, and then they brought in a bobcat in a dumpster to finish it off. And there's still tents on there, but I know y'all are working on it.
They came back, it's magical.
Yes, it's amazing, but thank you. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Persis?
Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of things I'd like to share. First of all, I'd like to echo what Commissioner Sargent said about the Fourth of July. It was absolutely fabulous. The grand finale of those fireworks were just tremendous. I mean, they were great. So Leisure Services, Rob, all of you, you know, that's a lot of work, and it was fabulous. Everybody was talking about it. It was just great. So again, Ormond Beach did it, and you did it in great fashion. I also wanted to mention Officer Stokes myself, too. When I was the principal at Pine Trail Elementary School, he was our Dare officer, and that's really how I got to know him. And I can tell you, the kids love their Dare officers, no matter, but I tell you what, Officer Stokes took it to another level, a total other level. And those kids talking about screaming and getting excited and really relating to someone, it's really very, very special. And he, you know, he deserves a lot for what he's given to our children in our county, so I'm just very appreciative of him, and it was a well-earned honor for Officer Stokes. And I loved hearing your story, Joe Daniels, you and Officer Stokes. That's amazing. So thank you for all you have done for him and others. And lastly, I just want to say something. We all know that Commissioner Bohm and his wife Dee lost their daughter over the weekend, and I did have the opportunity to speak with both of them. And, but what they told me was something really special that I really, I'm sorry the chief isn't here, but someone I know will share this with the chief. But in the middle of the night, two female police officers came, and they had to help out with the situation with the death of their daughter. And Dee Bohm told me that the police officers that came couldn't have been more kind, sympathetic, caring, and couldn't have been more supportive during such a horrible time in their lives. And that was something they noticed that night after what they were going through. So our police officers are amazing, and they did whatever they did to make the Bohmens feel special, they did it, and I think that speaks volumes for our police department and for our chief. And with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Bryley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll echo the comments of the staff, Leisure Services, folks, fantastic Fourth of July celebration. You know, it was a great night. The weather cooperated. It cooled off a little bit, fortunately. The rain held off, fortunately, and it was a great event. Thank you again for everything you guys do. I'd also like to congratulate and commend Officer Stokes, sing his praises. You know, you can tell by his comments tonight that he really loves this community, and it's folks like Greg Stokes that not only make our community a great place, but also is a great reflection upon our police department. Because I do truly believe that all of our officers care probably just as much as Greg Stokes does about this city. So, and I'd also like to congratulate Judge Schuman. And Alex didn't know that Judge Schuman was your mother, but we thank her for her service to this community. She's been a great judge, and you have a lot to be proud of. I also want to extend my condolences to the Bohm family. You know, Rick and Dee have given a lot to this city, continue to give a lot to this city, and it's just very heartbreaking. I can never, you know, unless you've been through it, you can never experience the loss of a child. And I'm sure, I know that's just, it's out of order. It's not the way it's supposed to happen, and I feel very, very sorry, very badly, for the Bohm family, and please keep them in your thoughts and prayers in the coming days. I didn't know, on maybe two discussion items, Mr. Mayor, that we can maybe just discuss now. As far as the public comments from Suzanne Shiber and Missy Herrera, I don't have any issue with our, you know, with us supporting what they proposed and sending some sort of letter of support to the county council for that extent.
I don't know, Joyce, is there any cost to that?
I don't think so. I think they're just looking for your support.
They're just looking for a letter of endorsement. I agree.
Okay, so that's something you can send?
Yeah, I can send it, but I can't draft it for your support.
I think you should send it.
Definitely.
And last but not least, I've gotten a few phone calls, well, actually messages regarding the DOT plan for reducing lanes on Noble Road, and the reduction from six lanes to four lanes, and at a time when this community is experiencing the growth that we're experiencing, and with what could be coming in Temoca Oaks, and what will be coming out west of us, I think it's unconscionable to talk about reducing lanes, when in many areas, we probably look at expanding lanes. And I'm not promoting expanding lanes, but I just don't think we need to be reducing lanes. So I don't know if we want to, you know, discuss with DOT their plans, you know, in further depth and further detail with DOT, but, you know, eight-foot sidewalks in an area where you don't see a lot of pedestrians, and removing two lanes of a six-lane roadway, I think is, you know, I think it's regressive.
I think that's worthy of a discussion.
I think so, too. Probably a workshop with DOT invited to explain the science behind how four lanes moves traffic better than six lanes. Because of the concept of induced demand, you end up with worse flow and faster traffic with more deadly accidents with six lanes than you get with four lanes. So certainly a lot of considerations.
With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Talland?
You save the best for last, right?
That's right.
All right, great. I do have a book. Just bear with me. And although we haven't met in the chambers for a long time, so I gave myself an extra page of comments because it's been a while, and I don't want to lose that momentum with you guys. But I just want to say a couple of things. I'm amazed at the number of folks that are engaged in city matters because of their passion for the city, and I realize even more so now that it's not the elected officials that make a difference, it's all the individual citizens that work together to make the difference. And I do appreciate anyone that offers their opinion about our great little city and what we can do when you come with a solution to continue to enhance it. As a recap, I'm not going to describe them. I'm just trying to give us a little of what, I want the public to know, a lot of the things that we've been doing while we've been off. I personally have been going to some Regrow the Loop meetings, planning and educational. I've gone to some civil discourse planning meetings. I've gone to Citizens for Ormond Beach meetings. I attended a really nice breakfast, a Pace breakfast honoring Miriam Giabi White, and really understood what Pace does in our community. We had a fun groundbreaking at Temoca Elementary. I've attended a River to Sea TPO meeting where they talked about budget priorities, FDOT updates. And one interesting fact that I found, and I probably shouldn't have been surprised, but they were stating that homelessness has increased 17% in our area from 2022 to 23. I went to the County Growth and Management Workshop, Scenic Loop Meetings, Downtown Main Street Monthly Meetings, and had a fun Fourth of July fireworks celebration. I was a little amazed when we approved the amount of money we did for fireworks, and I was like, oh, this is just way too much. But there's no way you can ever say no to the fireworks, and we do such a fun job, and everybody enjoys it. Did attend the Ormond Beach Police Department when they honored Sergeant Michael Gardner and Community Service Officer Shannon Champion, and that was a very nice event. Now, I would like to, and I just mentioned this, Harold, I would like to endorse and offer support to the Wildlife Corridor Initiative presented by Suzanne Shiber. Our actions today can help the sustainability of our future, protect wildlife, and conserve land in the future. So I thought what I would do really quick is just to update you on the Regrow the Loop initiative, since we've endorsed, or we've endorsed that. Stakeholders are continuing to meet, and the board is growing in numbers, and I... Stakeholders are continuing to meet, and the board is growing in numbers and ideas. There have been two educational workshops. I know Commissioner Persis went to one, I don't think you went to the second one. They've been held in our library, and they've been very well attended. The stakeholder, stakeholder groups are now offering additional learning experiences through their own programs and walks coordinating with Regrow the Group, Regrow the Loop. The Scenic Loop folks, the Native Plant folks, the UF IFIS Extension, the Audubon Society, all are playing a major role in this pilot program in educating others. Even our Timoca State Park Rangers are assisting as well. I publicly want to thank Scott Vanacore for sponsorship of sourcing and, and planting, and future planting of one thousand to two thousand linear feet of native trees and plant, additional plantings along the buffer, just south of the entrance to Akoma, up on the loop. The buffer plant material was chosen with the input of the Native Plant Society president, Leslie Nixon, and I also want to thank Volusia County for assisting with, they will be assisting with the watering schedule that has been designed and, until the plants are established, established in their natural state. It's just a great example of collaboration, and when you can put a lot of great minds together, what, what the city can do, or what the county is doing. As a reminder, this pilot program is ending in late spring. I'm excited to see where it goes. At some point, I'll probably be asking for a workshop with you all to see how we would, if we're interested in continuing support, and what the city can do in the future to prop, to promote and grow the loop. Also, there is, if anyone cares to, go on the Volusia County website, you can look at the Regrow the Loop, and there is a personal pledge and an education piece, if you're interested in that. And I actually would like, I don't know if it's something I can ask now, if we could put that on our Facebook information as well, if you guys are okay with that. And that would just be a direction to go to the Volusia County website, Regrow the Loop. Briefly, congrats to Judge Schuman. I had no idea that was your mom. That's so cool. You must be very proud of her. Officer Greg Stokes, my kids did not interact with Greg in the school system, but they were at South Ormond, and they saw him all the time, and he was just a very positive influence. And yay for Parks and Recreation. I'm so glad it's our month. It's my jam. I love Parks and Recreation, so congratulations, Robert. Want to thank Kelly, she's amazing, Budget Advisory Board. I was really appreciative of the hard work that they did in bringing forth the suggestions they did. Staff input, thank you. Commission, thank you for the lively discussion, and as, you know, sometimes it, it just takes a little bit of discussion like that to, to put all the ideas out, and hopefully we can all keep moving forward and coming up with those good ideas. And last but not least, I do want to extend my deepest sympathy to the Bohm family, and I just, God bless them. Amen.
Thank you.
That's it. Good night.
You guys covered everything. We are adjourned. Thank you.[1796.66][1796.66]